Public directory school board of directors meeting. Six thirty three. So first order is public comment. Do we have anyone? Live or virtually who would like to get a public comment? Yeah. Yes. Yes, if you do, please come up to the front. And announce yourself.
All right, I'm Karen Scender. And that's Gabe Groveman, and we're some representatives from Earth Group at the high school. So we came here, as you may remember last year, to discuss the like implementation of a net zero plan for the school district. Currently, the city of Montpelier has one, but it excludes the school district. And we're some of the biggest emitters of carbon in the city.
And we're just thinking that especially since we have some extra funds this year, it's like especially been targeted. Think seriously about implementing that policy.
So in the past, we have discussed forming like a committee to come up with a plan to do so because obviously, it's a lot to take on. And we'd be really excited and happy to work with the school board on the way to make that come to fruition. I don't know if Gabe has anything to add.
I mean, yeah, just that it's like a pretty big opportunity right now to to use some of this money to take a better look at how we heat the school and where our energy comes from. And to the point about how this affects students like well being and health, I think climate change and the climate crisis in our environment is a pretty big part of students' health and well being and everything like that. I think it's pretty important and a pretty big part of what Montpelier stands for, so hopefully, we can use this as an opportunity to move that forward.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We are definitely, you know, thinking about climate. We invest our funds and so they're going to talk about more throughout the year. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
It's a super important issue.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Excellent. Anyone else for both of them? So on to the consent agenda. So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda today except for grant's resignation.
I would approve that. Is it possible?
I don't have a motion approved, approve the consent agenda.
I moved to approve the consent agenda.
No, a second. Joe Beazer is a tie.
I think Joe got it.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Chris, and I'm assuming you voted I.
I did say hi, yes.
So speaking of the grants, our second budget presentation, thank you for coming again, and I'll hand over to you.
Great, and.
Okay, Grant, I'm sorry to interrupt you for one second. Did Anna send you today? New hire?
Yes. Oh, yes.
A new what?
Yeah.
A new hire.
Yes, she did.
She did. Do we need to say it? I don't, I just want to make sure that that gets passed as well.
Let's make sure. I did not.
Yep. Hold on, if it was two forty six. It's not listed on the consent agenda, so I moved to approve the new hire. My second.
All is in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you. Yeah. All right, Grant, sorry.
So you know, the first presentation is like forty pages and it's a lot of detail. The second list just changes, so it's not very much. That's the good news. The bad news is the next one is a public forum, so we're back to a big one again. So enjoy tonight while you can. I will tell you that the PDF that you were sent with your board materials, there's been a few real small changes. So what you're going to see on the screen is has a few different bullets than you might have, but nothing significant, and I'll try to call those out. So Anna, thank you for sharing that briefing. If you could go to the next page. So this is just a reminder, the last presentation included all of the bullets that you see. It is posted on the board's webpage. If you get to the school board's webpage under mrpsvt.org and then go to the school board, there's a button that says budget. Click on that and you'll see last time's presentation. It includes all of those details. Next, please. Now, the outline for today is is much more simple. It's just changes to go over what are still unknowns. Give you a quick glance at what the budget looks like and then go into the tax rates and then remind you of the outlook and give you a summary. Next. Next, Anna. Thank you. So the changes, there's quite a few, actually. We talked about it last time that that we just got the dollar yield right before we came in here. That dollar yield is fantastic news from a tax rate perspective. So what I'm doing right now is on this presentation, I used the scenario B recommendation, which is the one that's not quite as high, and it's the one that doesn't does not assume that we're going to use the that the state will use the full ninety million dollar surplus. So hopefully, it's a conservative number and it won't get any worse. It does dramatically drop the tax rates. On the flip side, the common level of appraisal, we talked about that a little bit and the fact that home prices are going through the roof, which means the CLA will drop and tax rates will go up. We were a little concerned that maybe I hadn't dropped that CLA assumption enough, so I dropped it some more and I'm hoping, especially for Montpelier, that that the additional four percent that I reduced it will be safe. Roxbury is a little bit of a wild card because last year their CLA went up for some unknown reason. And so if there's a correction, they could really drop down. I just don't know, and hopefully we'll know soon. I would say hopefully by the end of the month, maybe? Twenty third. Merry Christmas. So we'll see that soon. And for the January fifth presentation, that will be plugged in, so that'll be one less thing that's unknown. Also, since the tax rate was coming down a little bit, we talked about the fact that we have five ESSR funded positions and the desire we have to try to make sure that those are sustainable, to try to pull those into the local funding. One position already had been done at UES. We looked at the other positions and we're looking at this community liaison position, thinking this is certainly something we want to hold on to. It looks like it's a permanent thing that we're going to need. So we shifted that ESSR funded position into local funds. And with those three statements there, you're going to see later on, and I don't mean to spoil the surprise, but later on, you're going to see that the tax rates from this year to next year, right now, are pretty much level, which would be fantastic. But there are still those unknowns, so I'm a little nervous still, but we'll see. Expenses, so we got a statewide pre-K tuition rate, which was a little bit higher than I assumed, so it increased the cost by two thousand dollars. There's a higher tech tuition rate, but that's a an on behalf payment that we see actually an expense and a revenue. So even though the total expense goes up, the revenues went up too, so it really didn't change the ed spending amount. And then there's higher retirement rates, and what that is, is the Vermont State Teacher Retirement. They have an assessment, two different assessments. One is for any federally funded teacher. And so you have to pay a percentage of of the salary toward this retirement. That rate was higher than I thought it would be. But that's also another one where that expense goes up, but the revenue does too, because these are federal funds. So there's no change in that spending. Unfortunately, the other assessment relates to new teachers and health benefits. So teachers that are new to the retirement program, we have to pay an assessment to make sure that the health benefits are covered. That was a little higher than I assumed as well, so that did increase the budget and it's spending by about three thousand. So not big numbers, thankfully, but a little bit. So Anna, next, please. So what is still unknown are the, to me, right now, the biggest unknown is equalized pupils. We know our data is going to be good, so we were hoping that that might mean that we'll see an increase, but it's always a little bit of a mystery for equalized pupils, right? Because equalized pupils, one of the calculations is an equalizing ratio that gets thrown in at the end. So even though we're looking good and maybe increasing, if somebody else is increasing even more, then they might have to bring everybody down a little bit so that the number of equalized pupils equals the actual number of pupils. So because of that little strange kind of witchcraft that happens, I never really know what's going to happen with equalized pupils until I see it. And then when we do see it, we typically see three or four versions of it. So we have a long way to go for equalized pupils, but hopefully by the fifth, we'll get at least one or maybe two versions so that we can start getting closer to a real number there.
An outside consultancy to clean up our data around this. So our numbers around equalized peoples that we put towards the state are probably the cleanest we've ever had. Because there was a lot of weird snafus in our system based on turnover of staff and things like that. So we're pretty confident in the numbers that we gave to the state.
Right.
And it'll get more.
Yeah. But you know, you look at things like free and reduced population, there's a factor that gets thrown in that really increases your numbers, and our free and reduced population isn't really that high and others are. So you could see that maybe others might really be expanding their counts, which then at the end, if everybody's brought down, even though we're increasing, we may not be increasing. So that's why I'm a little unsure about that. The dollar yield is still on here because even though we have the tax commissioner recommendation, it has to be set by law. And that doesn't happen until after town meeting day. So that's that's going to be an unknown all the way through this process. But we're using a number that I think is as good as we're probably going to get, and it's a good number. So you'll still see this for probably all the way through, but I don't expect that we're going to actually have a final final until after everything's done. Common level of appraisal, we talked a little bit about this. Now you can see, I'm assuming a drop of six point four percent in Montpelier and eight point two in Roxbury. As I said, I'm pretty confident that that Montpelier assumption is going to be safe. But Roxbury, just because there's there's a weird factor in Roxbury that was causing some problems, so much so that even though they were around a hundred percent, which means you shouldn't have to worry about a reappraisal, they are reappraising because there was a problem with their calculation. So I really don't know about that. I'll be relieved when I see that number on the twenty third. And the other unknown is tech center six semester average. That one I do think has a good chance of being higher than what we assumed. And for every kid that is it that it goes up, it's about eighteen thousand dollars or so. So if we're off by a few kids, that could be thirty five to forty thousand dollars. So there could be a little bit of an unpleasant surprise for expenses in that area, but we'll we'll have to see. All right, Anna, please. So at a glance, there's very, there's like two or three thousand dollars maybe difference from what you had in your original packet. Compared to December first, the total budget is going up four point five percent now. If you remember, it was four point four before. The ed spending was showing, I think, three point five last time, and it's up to four percent now. And a big part of that is that position that we shifted from federal funds to local. So even though that didn't increase our expense budget, because it was already in there, it reduced our non-tax revenues, which meant our ed spending went up. But once again, we did that because the dollar yield looked good and we thought we could, it would be a good time to put that in and and get that position sustained. Equalized pupils is highlighted, obviously, because we still don't know. And spending per pupil increases about four percent. Just so you have a point of reference, though, the excess spending threshold this year is nineteen thousand nine seventy seven. So we are over two thousand dollars under the threshold, so we're in great shape for the foreseeable future. Next, please, Anna. And actually, you can go one more. So the tax rates, the next one, please. There we go. I'm not going to go through the terminology because we did this last time, but anytime I show the tax rate calculation, I try to keep this chart in there so that people have this for reference. So this just spells out the terms and what they mean. And so if you get asked any questions, you can have some answers. The actual calculation, you saw the top part in that at a glance. What you didn't see was the property dollar yield being thrown in here and then the tax rate. And let's see. The common level of appraisal is still highlighted, but it's it's four percent lower than the last time you saw it. And the important thing that people will look at is the very bottom line, the residential tax rate with CLA. You can see for Montpelier, one point seven seven two compared to last year, this current year, one point seven seven four. And then Roxbury, one point four seven compared to one point four six six. So both of those are within a penny. If you round it off, it's it's not even a penny. So that would be great if this is where we end up. I did call out in those text boxes kind of the impact of some of this so that you kind of get a feel for it. For for instance, if the property dollar yield hadn't increased, if it was the same, then the tax rate would be twenty one to twenty five cents higher than it is. That's a huge amount. The merger incentive having to absorb that loss of two cents of an incentive is about two and a half cents when you factor in the CLA. And then the drop in CLA is huge. If the CLA was level, Montpelier's tax rate would be almost fourteen cents lower and Roxbury's would be almost twelve cents lower. So you'll see big swings going the opposite direction. The dollar yield is a favorable impact, CLA and the loss of that merger incentive is negative. But when everything is all factored in together and settles out, it's less than a penny. And we are able to pull that community liaison position into the local budget. Now, realize, as I mentioned, some of those things are still unknown, so some things could still change. So I don't want to get too excited yet, but right now we're looking good. Next, Anna. The next slide shows the tax rate impact. Afraid Anna has a hard time hearing me through the system here. There we go. Since the estimated tax rates were pretty much level, as you saw in that last slide, the impacts are really minimal. So you can see for every hundred thousand dollars, Montpelier would have a three dollar decrease in a tax bill. For Roxbury, it's a four dollar increase because it's point three cents and point four cents. So very minimal changes. And, you know, we'll keep refreshing this as we have changes in the tax rates. So next, please. And the next slide that you're going to see is that tax rate history that shows you the line charts. And basically is a kind of a reminder that that we're in pretty good shape compared to where we were before we merged. So the and in fact, in fact, if you look at this, the only negative trend is Montpelier's tax rate with CLA factored in, which we can't control the CLA. Everything else looks good compared to when we merged. Montpelier's tax rate with without CLA is fifteen cents lower than back in eighteen. And in Roxbury, even if you factor in CLA, which we can't control, it's twenty five cents lower than before we merged. So each year you may kind of have a different perspective, but if you go all the way back to before the merger, we're doing pretty good. Next, please. Okay, so I should just start talking. So the next slide is the outlook slide, which which was provided in the last briefing. I just leave it in here because it's good to keep these things in mind, because you don't only want to think about the budget you're building, you want to think about the budget you're building and and what the next budget and the budget after that might look like as far as tax rates and managing things. So I just wanted to remind people reappraisals are happening right now. That'll be a big impact next year. Montpelier should see a big drop in their tax rate. Now, realize your tax, your assessed your appraised values of your houses are going to go up though, so a higher value with a lower rate will probably keep you at about the same place. But the tax rate itself will go down significantly. Libby's talked about the new equalized pupil count and the waiting that they're the waiting study. When that hits, it could decrease our numbers dramatically because, as I mentioned, some of our percentages aren't as high as other places, so like free introduced percentage is lower than maybe some others. ELL may not be as high as others. So we could actually see a drop in equalized pupil count. My hope is that if that is significant, it will be transitioned across time. If it's a drop of, say, fifty kids, that it would be maybe ten kids per year for five years or something along those lines. Some kind of a hold harmless in the legislation, perhaps. Enrollment in staffing, we've talked about this. Enrollment is pretty stable. In the higher grades, we're still seeing that increase, and the lower grades is where we're seeing the decrease. But overall, we're pretty stable. The merger incentive, this is the last year, we have to worry about absorbing that impact of the two cents being gone because we're already at zero, so that's not going to be an issue in the future. So the next slide is just the budget summary that talks about the total budget increase is four and a half, ed spending is four. Spending per pupil is four, which makes sense because I haven't changed our equalized pupil count yet because I don't know what that's going to be. Residential tax rates, that's the good news for tonight. It's a decrease of point three cents in in Montpelier. And if you remember last time we talked, it was looking like it could be as much as nine point three cents increase. So fantastic. In Roxbury, it's a point four cent increase instead of a nine point seven increase. And then the next slide is just a reminder that our ARP ESSR plan is public and can be found at the URL that shows up on the slide for anybody to start digging into. Some of that would come into play is not part of our budget. The only thing in our budget is the ESSR funded positions, the proposed ESSR funded positions that we've talked about, which is a small amount of the ESSR funds. But if we start talking about projects, including the projects that our students were just talking about, that might come into play in in the ESSR funds that aren't necessarily part of the budget or in infrastructure funds, which aren't part of the budget. And then the last slide is actually kicking it back to you. If you have any questions or concerns that I should be looking at between now and the fifth, which is, I guess technically, we call it a public forum. So if there's anything you need from me or any questions, I'll be happy to try to.
So I'm actually going to go head down the hall. My son is playing a concert.
Have fun.
About to start. Turn it turn over to you, Andrew, and I will, I'm actually going to take my stuff in case this is longer, it's shorter than anticipated, but but I'll turn over to you, Andrew, and thank you very much, Grant. It was an excellent presentation and the tax news is always good to hear.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Have fun. Joe?
I just had a quick question, and this may not be something you can answer. I feel like I just read this week that there was some court decision about teacher healthcare benefits and required payment. Maybe Montpelier Roxbury already provides healthcare, but something about the copay is increasing for some school districts because of this court case.
Yeah.
The statewide arbitration, that that is happening and we should be in pretty good shape there. One thing is it doesn't take effect until it's based on a calendar year. So it would only be half of this year that we're talking about because it would be January first of twenty twenty three. And most of what I've seen in the statewide agreement is in alignment with what we offer. The only difference was an out of pocket maximum amount that I'm trying to think of. Was it teachers and administrators? And it was like two hundred dollars less out of pocket. Yeah, so for the for the teachers and administrators, it's like two hundred dollars for a single plan and four hundred dollars for two person or family plan that is lower for them, which we would have to bump up. So worst case scenario for some of our employer employees for half the year, we may have a little bit more money that we would have to kick in for like the HRA, HSA. But the other thing is, as you know, we've talked about this before, we don't see a hundred percent utilization of our HRAs and HSAs anyway. So I'm not overly concerned, but it is it is a factor that between now and the fifth, we might look at it again, and if we think it's enough of a risk, we might plug something else in, but I think we'll be okay. I think there's a lot of other districts that maybe are in worse shape than than us, maybe.
And Grant, I just I just want to provide clarification for the public and any members of the board who aren't familiar. This is the second statewide teachers healthcare agreement that is being put in place. The first was two years, right? We're in the middle, we're in the middle.
But really two calendar years, I think.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, two and a half. And that was a that was a change before that healthcare agreements were negotiated at the individual district level. It didn't impact our district very much, that change.
And it's and it isn't actually. I think a large driver is the is the teachers, the NEA, but it impacts all employees. And everything I've seen for all support service, support employees, it's identical to what we have now. It's only teachers and administrators that is a little different for out of pocket max.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah. I have another clarifying one. On the, this is actually on the ESSR public plan, which I know we're not talking about right now, but just because they do kind of intersect with the budget. There's a, there's a great list of all the different sources of federal funding, section three of it. The very last one is called other funding sources to achieve recovery goals and is also like two point five million dollars, whereas our ESSR three is two point two three. I was just curious, what what are some of those funding sources?
Is is that the line that has the potential for infrastructure and infrastructure package?
Where are you? Well, if you click on my M, you'll go to where I have the cursor. I think you should be able to do that. I'm in section three. It's the grid that starts with the has like funding source allocation.
Actually, I believe that's this two point five five three, but then the context for ESSR three.
Is in the notes. Yeah. And then ESSR three is listed above.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Okay, so remember, thanks. I clicked on the context. I was like, oh, yeah, I know this.
Good.
That was, that's like local funds. Remember, we talked about how when we first started the ESSR conversation, it was like, it was really important to to put the goals of the recovery through the lens of what we are currently doing and how much local funds we're currently spending. Things like social work, people like social workers, guidance counselors. So that context then. So that context there, that document.
Yeah.
Was from this budget year, not next budget year, but this budget year for the buckets that the recovery plan was in. Remember we had that conversation?
Got it. So the two point five million are local funds we are spending this year.
Right.
That meet some of the requirements or whatever. Okay. So it's not money we can expect coming in.
No, it's not new money. It's money we're already spending.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That should probably be clear in the public plan. I can announce myself.
All right.
Grant, you, you mentioned the one position that moving out of ESAR. Um, does that mean we lose out on the ESAR funds or the?
No, it's, it, um, that position was actually funded for, um, we planned to fund it for two years using SR two money. Um, so it actually opens up SR two money for something else. And you know, we'll, we'll see what, we're going to talk about that maybe next week to see what else we might want to do with that availability. SR two is a little more flexible even than SR three. So it doesn't stop us from using, we'll use it, we'll just use it for something else. But the exciting thing for me is I've seen how important that position is. And now to know that it's not relying on federal funds anymore, I can breathe a sigh of relief that it is, it's going to be in the budget now. And it'll be secure.
Yeah, so, yeah, that doesn't make sense. I was just curious.
Yeah, we will still be able to use.
We'll be looking at what we want to, so it frees up SR two funds. So we, we've actually been talking the last couple of weeks or last couple of days. We were, if we move the community aids on that, actually SR two, what then will we use SR two from? Because the deadline for, for applying for all of those ones in SR two is, yeah, it's coming up. So not to use them, but to, to apply for them. So ah, so we've been talking about that. For instance, one idea we have, the next question, right? Is uh, the internet outages that we were experiencing the last two weeks was due to our security cameras. And uh, archaic security cameras across the district having to upload new software to try to support them that totally messed up our internet and opened us up to some outside discreants trying to get into our system, which is why our internet was so flippy for a whole week and a half. So we've talked about upgrading our security systems, our security camera system across the district. Maybe because of that.
And it's so bad that the company that actually installed it back in the day, they don't even exist anymore. So there's no way, there's nobody providing service to, to help with any kind of problems we have. So it's.
So that's kind of just popped up. And so we're, it's an expense, it's a big expense of what we're using to pay their salary. Ironically enough, so we were like, would that be something that, so we wouldn't have to, you know, top up fund balance for that. Could we put that in SR two? That's just an idea that we're throwing around.
Is that something that would be visible for us?
I think so. We're not positive. That's a question that we're still working on. We think so.
We've come up with an argument of two.
I, I like that approach too, because we're taking that ongoing structural cost, building it into the budget, especially in such a good budget year, like we're experiencing. And then using that money for.
Yeah, that would be a one time, that would be a relatively longer duration, one time expense, which would be perfect for SR two funds.
Right.
So that does make sense. Just out of curiosity, did you mention equalized pupils and we had outside consulting forum to come in? Uh, just out of curiosity, was that a net, what, what was the net effect that you guys figured out? Well, the equalized people.
Yeah.
Okay, went up or because of that it went down?
Well, no, it went up. Our count went up.
Okay.
So we are now counting more pupils than we have before. That's a very, yeah. So we'll see if it nets out with what the AOE comes back with in terms of equalized pupils, but, but.
So, so how does this work? The, we submit this and then the AOE has to approve it or they correct?
No, we submit it, we submit it and then they have some mathematical formula that nobody quite understands. Except for Brad James.
Yeah, exactly.
So that guy, the AOE, and, and they spread out the equalized number to us.
So what we, what we submit is basically the average daily membership. And so we submit that for last, last year or this, yeah, last year, and we just submitted it for this year. So our data that we feed in is the average daily membership. And that's the data that we know now is good, solid data, whereas we were having problems before. The challenge and why I say it's kind of a mystery is because once that kicks in, I have no idea. You know, Brad James is a person at the Agency of Education. He puts that in and then he collects the data on all the free and reduced percentages, the ELL percentages, the pre-K numbers for every district, runs that across and puts in all those weighted factors, applies all those. And then it comes out to a number and that number would end up being like a hundred and thirteen thousand kids. And then of course, there's only like ninety thousand kids in Vermont. So then he applies some factor to everybody to bring it down to ninety thousand. So that's why even though we might have our ADM each year going up and I get all excited thinking, oh, I can't wait to see the equalized pupil. If other people have even bigger increases or bigger percentages for some of those weighted factors, even though our ADM goes up, our equalized people could end up in there. So it's, it's a really almost impossible thing. I mean, if, if you get frustrated by the tax rate calculation, you'd really get frustrated by trying to make sense of the equalized pupil. But our piece is that ADM and because of this company that we've begun working with, we feel really good about the quality of our data. So if it goes down, it's not going to be because of us. It'll be because of just statewide factors. Okay. Thanks.
On that, am I right? Any questions?
Well, first I want to thank you for everything that you do all the time. Thank you for the terminology. That was really helpful to just have that. And for the tax rate history, that was very helpful for me. And then I have a, a new big question around the conservative numbers and what your experience has been when you play with those numbers, being conservative, like what happens once you put in the numbers, the budget passes and then so what is, what is the?
Yeah, I think last year we actually looked at some of this because last year we had a dollar yield. Was it just last year? Cause I, I actually looked really good one year because I, I didn't use the dollar yield that the tax commissioner provided and it wasn't, it's not because the tax commissioner made an error. It's just because we knew some economic factors had changed. So I used a more favorable dollar yield and it ended up being within like three dollars at, at the very end. So that was a good thing. The problem this year is I have never seen, since we started with the new way to calculate, I've never seen a dollar yield do what this is looking like it's going to do. It's never gone up by that much. So when I say conservative, I'm taking the low end number out of the, out of the recommendation. If I took the higher number, then the tax rate would even be lower, but it's just so unheard of that the dollar yield has gone that high in one year. That's why I'm a little nervous about doing that. Where, whereas in the past I have not been afraid of using a higher yield, but this year I just don't have any kind of, any insight that would lead me to believe that I should vary from what's in there. Um, so a conservative number there is, is, is not helping the tax rate. You know, a more aggressive number would make the tax rate lower. For CLA, I'm taking a conservative, fairly conservative number because I think the CLA has a real, real chance this year of dropping dramatically because now we have two really high sales um, data numbers out of the three years, because it's three year average. Two out of three years now are going to be really high sales numbers. So I'm trying to be consider, a little conservative there to make sure that we don't get a bad surprise. The good news is for CLA, we're going to know that pretty quick. And so on January fifth, when we do the public forum, that's one big unknown that will be known. So then it's really just whether we have any insight and Andrew is better at this than me. But at some point, if there's more insight into the statewide economic health that leads us to believe that we should do something different for that dollar yield, then we'll bring that to you. I will tell you that almost every colleague I have, they use the tax commissioner's number. And the AOE unofficially recommended that we use the lower number. And I think it would make sense, you know, if I was king for a day, this is, this is a great number and tax rates are in a good place. This is a great opportunity to capture that ninety thousand dollar surplus and put it in the bank while we have a chance. So I'm hoping that that's what they do. Was there any other conservative number that was?
No, I, yeah, no, I'm just trying to translate it into what happens. So once that, once it passes, the, our numbers are, like those unknowns are gone.
The only, whenever we go in for the informational hearing, the day before town meeting, everything is going to be solid with the exception of the dollar yield, which gets set by law. And you know, it, it's always like that.
The legislature sets it after voters vote on budgets.
And a lot of times it does end up getting set higher than what, it's frustrating because you fight to try to get a budget passed with a, with a tax rate that ends up being higher than what it really is, you know? But this year I just, I just don't know how it's going to play out.
In, in recent years, um, the, there have been budgets, there, there have been budget surpluses and especially before the pandemic, because the economy was performing at a reliable, reliably healthy rate. And uh, the governor and legislature were coming to agreement on a number of policies, which included essentially keeping tax rates pretty level for a number of years. And they did that by boosting the dollar yield from what was initially anticipated. That's like high level kind of explanation.
Now, the one number that isn't, well, I guess it might be considered conservative, the equalized pupil count is still an unknown. And by keeping it level, I thought initially maybe I was being conservative, but it really is in a, a pure unknown for me. So I, right now, I think the best guess is just leave it where it was this year and then wait for it. And hopefully we will have a pretty solid number by January fifth on that one too. Um, I expect by next week probably to get at least the first draft from the AOE.
Emma?
Um, I mean, I don't have very many questions and I think that's sort of attributed to how clear you have been presenting these budget presentations. So I really appreciate the clarity and sort of the educational tone that you take when you're, when you're presenting it to us. Um, it's really helpful. Can you tell me, um, has there, I mean, as long as I've been following, I don't think I remember seeing a drop in taxpayer, you know, in the, in the amount that people will be paying on their house. Have, have you seen a drop in the past like ten years or so?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I was just talking to Christina about a chart that we threw in there last year that showed tax rates. I mean, and, and it's hard because there's two different taxes, right? Because of the CLA, Roxbury versus Montpelier. But just to take a snapshot, I have a slide that shows the change in education spending from year to year and what that looks like. And then I have in a little text box what the tax rate did that year. And the first year, the, the ed spending went up like a million dollars and the tax rate went down like point two. And the next year it was only like a four hundred thousand dollar increase and the tax rate went up like eight cents or something. There's like no correlation between our spending.
Right.
And the final tax rate. But I will say, I think it was FY nineteen, the year after the merger, the tax rates were lower. And I don't, there shouldn't have been any kind of reappraisal. So theoretically, people should have seen lower tax rates uh, in Montpelier in nineteen. And I think for several years Roxbury should have seen it because the year before the merger, they were hit with that excess penalties.
Um, yeah.
Excess spending penalty, which meant they got double taxed. So in FY eighteen, their tax rate was really high.
Okay.
And so they have seen decreases, I would, I would say probably in multiple years.
Yeah.
But for Montpelier, I think since I've been here, the, the actual tax rate, I think has only gone down once. So with any luck, this could be the second.
Yeah, I mean, I think people are going to be really happy and just with the federal funding that's coming our way and the healthy um, fund balance, it's, you know, we've been able to present a budget that I think is really generous and, and good for the district and still see a savings. So I'm really impressed with that. Um, my other question, and I don't know if we need to spend time on it tonight, but just based on the um, public input that we received from the students, um, I mean, in that moment when they were giving their feedback or, you know, their testimony, I was thinking like, is there something that we can give them to sort of like a little bullet point of progress and where we're at and some of the things that are in the ESAR funding, uh, ESAR spending proposals that might be speaking to the net zero, you know, mission. And I think the other part of their testimony was to be asking us for a, an actual policy or a plan. So that's, that could be dealt with separately and maybe the policy committee could reach out to, um, that it was called the Earth Group. Yeah. Um, but so I don't know if there's like a very quick, like thirty second kind of overview of some of the stuff that we've done, because I know you, I mean, obviously there's windows are happening in the capital plan and I'm sure there's.
Yeah, we also, we buy into a solar field. So we have I'm not going to say it exactly right.
Yeah.
We need Andrew LaRosa here, but uh, we do work with a solar field through a student. It was a student presentation who brought it to us a couple of years ago. And Andrew worked with that student, I think the student's a bull and it or something like that. Um, but I can get Andrew LaRosa to talk more about that if you'd like. We also, we couldn't get a contractor to do it, but we have purchased and have ready to go heat pumps over at Roxbury. Um, we just couldn't find somebody to do it in the fall. So that's on target to get accomplished.
And the heat pumps at Roxbury was something that they presented to us as one of a big thing that could really help.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. So that will happen. We have, we have them.
Yeah.
Ordered them. We just didn't get anybody to mention it.
Yeah.
Um, so hopefully that will happen in the spring. Before we did that, we did a lot, we did, I had Andrew do a mold and just an assessment of air quality at Roxbury too, um, to make sure that there weren't, you know, we weren't going to put heat pumps into high dose problems because of the moisture that that building can suck in, be at the bottom of a hill. Um, so we did that big testing and it came out great, actually. Came out much better than we actually thought it would. Um, we've also, Andrew, Andrew's so much better than this. He's looked into different heating sources here and Andrew's professional opinion, we should wait for the infrastructure piece. There's a challenge to it. So when you're talking about different types of heating sources that have been brought to the attention to the board, you're also talking about like putting silos up. And so it, that would take away from fields. Uh, you know, we have a limited amount of space to do some of the work. So um, Andrew really would like to wait for infrastructure dollars to really think about those kind of big ticket items. Because they are very expensive to deal with. You're talking about usage of space um, that are currently pre-used. You know, if you come out here on a fall day, there's not a green space that doesn't have a team on it. Um, so we've been talking about that too.
And we've, we spent considerable money from the CRF bucket, which was focused on heating, ventilation and air conditioning. And a lot of that was not only just to improve air quality, but a little thing like um, changing to variable speed motors. So that like when you didn't need it, it would slow down and not use as much electricity. There was a lot of that kind of stuff that was going on that's, that's ventilation related that people wouldn't know about. And I'm sure that, and I'd have to go back, but Andrew does, what's the, calls it a facilities plan?
Facilities overview, yeah. There's a lot of stuff in there.
There's a lot and it might be a good thing for him to do a presentation that just focuses on efficiency issues.
Yeah.
Because we have done a lot that people wouldn't know because, you know, we probably don't do a great, as good of a job as we can trying to yeah, toot our own horn, like, you know.
Every vehicle we have is electric or hybrid.
Yeah, well, almost, yeah. But like the, the driver's ed vehicle is a complete electric vehicle, which we did do, try to do some press on that, but um, you know, not a whole lot, but we got hybrid vans and so we've done a lot, but you know, we, we could be better at trying to make sure people knew about it.
Yeah, I get that sense. And so I guess that's what I'm, I'm hoping to, you know, maybe I'll reach out to you, Libby, just to see if we can maybe circle back to the Earth Group and provide them with some of that information.
Yeah, and if the board would like, once we get through the budgeting
Yeah.
process to have Andrew come do, this is what we've done in terms of work towards um, climate with our buildings and structures and things we have control over. Um, this is where we could grow, should the board want to move in that direction. This is Andrew's opinion of those things, because he certainly has them. Um, this is where we could grow, should the board want to move in that direction. This is Andrew's opinion of those things, because he certainly has them. But we, we'd be more than happy to have him come in to do that.
And maybe we can invite the, the students, the Earth Group to that presentation.
Andrew meets with them regularly.
They already know what we're doing.
One of the big things that we do that, that people might not know is, we have, we're part of the district heat with the city. So Union Elementary School gets their heat through the city's district heat, which is, I think, um, Wood Pellet. And we're, it actually costs a lot. Um, it, it costs more than heating other buildings, but that's because it was related to a bond. And so at some point that should come back down, but, but that, that is one building that is definitely participating with the city hand in hand. But just as a reminder, it's, and you, you called it out, it's not really something to do with the budget, because what we. What we did was we just put in positions that we really feel strongly about that relate to SRS. The big chunk of like projects that we could do, we, we intentionally didn't put in here, because. You know, we don't have solid estimates for some of them, we, we couldn't say that we've really finished all the engagement that we want to do. To be able to say these are the projects, and also we haven't gotten approval from the AOE through the grant process. To even say if, if they're valid and they would approve them. But that is a bucket of money that is available, that if we can look into it and it makes sense, we certainly could. Spend it in ways that support that. But yeah, not part of this.
Yeah, thank you for that.
The big part of this, um, and this came up in our couple of facilities meetings that we've had, and in the city. I think it's BEIC who just issued this energy audit for the city that looked at public, public buildings and greenhouse gas emissions. And MSMS and MHS are the, the largest emitters, and it's on the thermal side, it's on the heat side. And the big, uh, recommendation coming out of that report, which was kind of higher level, it wasn't super. In the weeds, the way some other energy audits are, like if you were to have an energy audit of your house, it couldn't get into like that detail. But the, the, the recommendation was, um, if we wanted to really reduce greenhouse gas emissions. For this building in MSMS, where again, very limited space over there. Is to put in, uh, like biomass boilers. One of the things that came up, and I was just talking with Mia about this, and I'll keep this really brief. That's come up when I've been talking with people around the community, because I'm not an expert at all in pellet boilers, biomass boilers, absolutely not. So don't, I'm not pretending to be, an issue that's been brought up to me by some people who work in the public health space, as well as in, uh, the conservation space. Is the end of pipe emissions of biomass, if we were to add that to what we already have in this city. There, one public health professional brought up concerns about asthma rates rel- related to, um. Related to these types of systems, so. That's something that I think would want to evaluate with the greenhouse gas emission part, it's a, it's, it's a difficult situation to be in. How do you keep these large buildings, um, in a way that's healthy for the planet and healthy for the community, I think. You know, that's the big question for us. Amanda.
Um, it's a different topic.
Please, new paragraph.
Moving away, just like thinking and dreaming and, uh, thinking long term, that as we evolve at the board to this community engagement. People coming in to bring in these things that we really should be thinking about how to respond and how to keep. Like tap somehow of like, here are some of the issues that have been brought and give reports, like whether it's like, you know, like one page yourself. Hey, the community asks about climate, here are the things we're doing, hey, the community asks, and just to be that engaged with the community. So like, we're doing all these things, but we should know that we're doing all these things. And, uh, and so I think, like, being able to have that as something that we do when we're thinking communication. That's part of like a communication strategy, so like, just that it is needed to. Listen and give feedback back, right, like, and have this evolving mechanism long term. That this is how we, as a district, listens and responds to concerns, ideas. And, you know, what, I don't know, like, how to implement that, or like, what is as a board that will put, you know. Or is that something? Yeah, so that's to draw there, because it's so important when budget time comes around, just like. Have that be, like, we're already doing that, and here are the things that we are.
I wholeheartedly support that statement and just feel like it's been a kind of a struggle, because we've been doing these listening sessions. And with the student listening session, for example, I emailed everyone the, the list of things that they have brought up and sort of wanted to fill in the blanks. And provide, you know, some feedback to the student group of like where we're at as a district or a board on some of their concerns. And it's going to end up taking months to get back to them, it's just the slow, the wheels of democracy turn slowly and we're all very busy. Um, so yeah, I, I think it would be really great to sort of build in a mechanism to be more, a little more responsive.
I think with the students, our plan, if I'm not mistaken, Emma, after our correspondence lately, is. We are doing a lot of things already that they're asking for, and it's important to highlight that, and this budget also incorporates some ideas. That students have brought forward, so my plan, Grant, I'll be reaching out about a couple of items, just to fact check some things. But our plan is, I think, late January, get back to that big group of students with an overview of what we have been doing. And what this budget includes that addresses some of the, some of the issues and concerns and priorities that rock to us. That's just an example. So community engagement discussion, this seems like a good opportunity to pivot there.
When it comes to identifying the need for individual assistance, which we have many open positions. How do you determine where you need one, or, and how do you, how does that compete with? The many opening, you know, how does that, how do you factor in the fact that there are so many positions that can't be filled?
Yeah, good question, because that was part of our discussion as we were planning the budget this year, actually. Um, so how would they determine our multiple facets, right? The major one is that the IEP team around a student would decide whether or not a student needed additional instructional assistance support. Right, that's, that's an IEP team decision, based on a student with special needs. Another might be just a school need, so for instance, it's really hard to run an elementary school without somebody out there volunteering recess. And lunch, uh, and in our teacher contract for Union Elementary School, teachers don't do that. So you need somebody to do that, right, so be an instructional assistant who typically takes on that role. Um, another thing we thought about that's besides the, it's kind of connected to the IP process, but it's not. So we have students, flexible pathways, students who go to all kinds of different things, so today you have a high school, it would be right. And so we've talked about, are we paying a faculty member, a teacher, or even an administrator a pretty high salary? To drive students around, right, could that be done by somebody else? So that's a different piece that we've thought about, um, but this year in particular, in the budget conversation, we have, we talked. Administrator said, I need an IA for, like, driving was a, was a good example for flex pathways. And Grant's able to say, well, we have eight openings right now, we have IEP services covered for the most part right now. Maybe not with the person ideally that we want to cover, but we have them covered, and I use right now, I'm strapped, absolutely, I'm looking at Karla Krennman's name on the. On the public, who's one of our absolutely fabulous IAs at Union Elementary School. And they may be very strapped, however, we've got the needs covered. But Grant's saying we got eight openings still, because we never have riffed any of those positions, because it's a union position, so if you lose an IEP position, you're riffing it. But we've just continued to budget for it, they've just gone as unfilled positions. So when, I mean, just. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you, Amanda, I'm sorry, production force. So, um, instead, instead of adding an IEP position to, for the van for flexible pathways. Grant said, could we use one of these open positions as part of their job description, would be to drive students around. Um, so we had lots of conversations around that.
In the Thrive, two for Thrive program?
For the alternative programming for, um, social emotional behavior and social skills, we talked about. If we have all these openings for instructional assistants, then when we're able to hire, we're hiring with the idea of looking at the Thrive or the Rise program at EES. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, is it common for IAs to move in as substitutes when the need comes up? And is that, are they frequently being pushed in a lot of different directions and unable to do? And sort of unable to provide that support?
This year they are, um, we do have it in their contract, we, uh, we negotiated in the last contract a pay structure for IAs. Who, if we can't find a substitute, if they take that substitute role, then they get an additional payment for that piece, yeah.
Because I'm not sure how much the, the, the wider board is aware, but historically Roxbury. I mean, in any classroom, you have two ends, sort of. At the side that needs a lot of support and the side that needs a lot of effort just to challenge them. And when you're talking about a first and a second grade in one room, that spectrum is so much wider, third and fourth grade in one room. So much wider, especially with, maybe with less kids, it's even wider, because you don't have as common a middle ground. As you would in a larger classroom potentially, I'm not sure, I just, that's sort of the spirit of the question of the IAs. And how that gets used, and I know that the per pupil spending is high, but it's a historical problem that a lot of kids are feeling like. I'm actually bored.
Yeah, I don't know if hiring an instructional assistant would solve that.
Wouldn't help.
I, I don't know, I'm not saying it would or it wouldn't, um, but when we're talking about. Educating our children, our instructional assistants are an essential part of that piece, particularly for kids who have needs. That are executive function type needs, or, you know, if there's a learning impairment, where dressing might be an issue, or, um, some sort of. Some sort of movement challenge, or, or speech, or toileting, or something like that. However, if you're talking about addressing the needs of a classroom solely, and I would argue that any classroom has that range. As a former first and second grade teacher. I think there are different, there are different things we want to look at than adding our instructional assistant into that space. I'm not sure if that would be the answer to solve that.
So I'm sensitive to the time, it's seven thirty six, is, is everybody all right moving on to community engagement? Be well, Grant, thank you. Community engagement discussion, is this the fifteen minutes that we added on previously, I believe it is? Mia, do you want to take this?
Yeah, I'm not sure we need the time, um, because I think we covered it in the last meeting, but why don't I just recap where I think we landed? And that way people can say, oh, that's not what I thought it was, and then we do need the time. Well, what we were focused on in the last meeting was community engagement. Um, particularly of communities, uh, our BIPOC families, families with LGBTQIA kiddos. Um, families with kiddos on, uh, with special ed, potentially literacy as well. And, um, I'm looking at Amanda, and then also Kristen, because we talked about this at the Equity Committee on Tuesday. Uh, we also talked about, um, a listening session with Roxbury families. All of it focused on the, uh, the work, like, get it, gathering input that we can share then with the administration. As they think about and land an SRS three, um, plan. And, uh, where we, where I think we landed last board meeting was that the board thought that was an important thing to do. Such that we are going to offer that support to the administration ourselves and facilitate those listening sessions. And then hand over what we gather, in a nutshell, is, and so that's.
Yeah, that, that's, as I recall it too, um, does anybody have any questions, want any further discussion on this? I actually have a question, if anyone else does. Um, did, does the Equity Committee, are you think, are you going to come back to the board with a proposal about this is how we'd like to handle this? How, how do, how do you suggest we move forward with this?
We can share that right now.
Great.
We, we had the date of January fifteenth in mind, that, that was a deadline to get information to Libby and the other administrators. So Amanda and Kristen are organizing the listening sessions for the first week of January. Or the beginning of that following week, so that we have the information and we get it to the administration, and I think that's as simple as that.
Is, is it the type of thing where it would be helpful for a bunch of board members to attend? Or do we think it would be better to have fewer board members?
Good, good, good question, um, we're thinking specifically about, uh, we really, these would be affinity spaces. So that folks have that, that common ground and that comfort level with sharing what their concerns and dreams are. Um, and so, um, would you like to step, to share who you have?
Sure, so I will be, so I have someone that will help me facilitate from a community member. All of the sessions from that, from that identity, so, um, and so I have someone already from the disability of the special ed. Who's the executive director of the new organization named All Brings the Lung in Vermont, and she's going to help me. Facilitate a special ed conversation, I'm meeting with her on Friday, action for coffee. I have the BIPOC affinity space, I have my friend Serica Tandem, who's a racial justice activist, former member of the Districtwide Equity Committee. She's going to help me facilitate the BIPOC group. I can be part of both, uh, the special ed and BIPOC, because I, both my kids have an IP. So I will be taking notes and just being their present, uh, for both the BIPOC and the, and the. And I'm also going to get someone from the LGBTQ community, um, I would not be in that one, because that is nothing to say. Some asking someone from there to take notes and make sure that we have, you know, like the format that they need, if any of us identify as.
Mara might be a good person, Mara Iverson.
Yes, yes, but I, I'm saying like from the board, if anybody identifies as a member of the LGBTQ plus community, that could be a space for you. Um, if not, then we'll have a committee member that can come.
And you're saying.
Mara's a consultant now, um, I'm meeting with outright tomorrow, but if we have money to pay Mara to help facilitate. I will not ask her to do it for free, um, but. You know, we could pay her a stipend, but I'm meeting with Bee from Outright tomorrow to see, having lunch, see if she will be. Help me facilitate that one, but I also have Julia, I'd love for him to ask, uh, to agree before that.
A few staff members too that might be interested in that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, um, and then, um, we did get that email from Angela. And then two other ones that want to have that literacy conversation, um, I was going to reach out, Mia was going to, was going to do the. Triage, um, to have that conversation to see, since we haven't really landed, whether or not they're going to come to present to us. Or, you know, what we should do, and then Kristen, you want to talk about Roxbury, and what we talked about, or you want?
Sure, yeah, can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so we discussed having a listening session in Roxbury. Um, I think what came to mind for me after seeing the, um, report from the infrastructure thought exchange. Is that we had two respondents that identified as Roxbury community members, which gave me some concern that, you know, are we getting the Roxbury voice here? Um, they have been doing a little bit more groundwork to get the thought exchange circulated, um, in Roxbury. I know, um, Bakelov, the principal at RBS, put it out in, uh, the Weekly Buzz, and RBS PTO put it out. And just been doing some outreach to folks kind of directly, um, but I just want to make sure that we're definitely capturing the Roxbury community voice. Um, around, around these topics, and that we have kind of a limited window, also, I know we only have two more days left in the thought exchange. And I don't know what our community's participation has been, and I don't know what our, the timing for the report would be, Libby. But I just want to really make sure that we're capturing Roxbury folks around, um, the SRS three topic. So, uh, we are able to use the Roxbury Free Library as a space, and, um, just. I know Amanda has a number of facilitators that she's coordinating with for her meeting, so once she has hers lined up, we're kind of going to figure out where Roxbury can fall in the lineup. In terms of scheduling.
Kristen, one thing on the thought exchange that I just realized, it's kind of in the way that we set it up. It's kind of impossible to know how many Roxbury parents have done it, because it's the, the choices. Our parents are guardian of a.
The, the choices, our parents are guardian of an RPS student. Like it's not.
By school.
It's not by.
Can you check? But can you check multiple?
Yeah, you can check multiple and there's another one for Roxbury community member. So that might be a person who lives in Roxbury who doesn't have a child in the school.
Right. I guess I was also thinking, I mean, maybe there's Roxbury parents who are kind of just checking, you know, the parent caregiver box and not also. Checking the, um.
That could totally be happening, but it's, you can't, you can't tell how many Roxbury people have participated.
Right. Well, I think the modular, and it could be just community members, but that registered at something like forty-two. So when I saw that, I was like, oh, you know, we should definitely do some kind of targeted outreach to, to Roxbury in case, I mean, that's capturing a reality. In terms of feedback.
Yeah, I just don't know if you could, if we can say, I can't tell how many Roxbury people have.
Right.
Built this out.
It seems like it can't hurt, you know, to do a little bit. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Anything else on that? I, I personally really appreciate this. Thank you all for working on this.
There's, there's, I have a question. There is a. Attempt at discussing Roxbury Village Schools Comprehensive Needs Assessment on Monday. And is, can any of that information overlap and inform any of this or is it separate from this or?
I didn't know that was happening.
That's, that's something that's being facilitated by Beth. And I don't, and I don't, it, can any of that information?
Yeah, absolutely. Bring it to us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just making sure that there's so many different. There are so many different outreach initiatives and I don't know exactly. They all seem very much overlapping in many ways.
That was, so that's a part of our leadership conversation we have around this kind of stuff. So she definitely breaks that to the table.
We're, we're promoting that as much as we can.
Yeah.
I wanted to clarify, Amanda, would, do you feel like it would be appropriate in the LGBTQIA group listening session? If anybody on the board has, uh, one. A child or a student in the district who also identifies that way, would they be then? Potentially invited to that? I just wanted, because I wasn't sure, you know, that you having the student that has an IP is very different.
Yes.
Experience than having a child. So I wasn't sure if that would translate.
Yeah, no, no. I think if you have, if you have, uh, a child that is identified as LGBTQ. Yeah, I agree. I mean, the students are also invited, but it is like if you have a child.
Yeah, especially if you have a child that was interested.
Do we? Do we want to do an additional equity committee update on top of that or?
We could add a couple more things. That's the big one.
Yeah.
That's our biggest priority. Second priority is the, uh, school climate survey. So Andrew has agreed, he's going to be reaching out to the teachers' union so we can start hopefully. Like beginning of the new year, start, uh, working with them on finalizing that. In the minutes from our meeting on Tuesday, which is in the board packet, you can see we drafted a, a timeline so that for. Not just the finalization of writing the survey, but also all the way through to teachers taking the survey, giving us their feedback. And us having a report. So just that's, I won't read those dates off because they're in our minutes. Um, that's.
Thank you for, for doing that.
Sure. Those are two really big ones. The other just things on our sort of grand to-do list are, um. We think we can, might be the place to incubate the new board member packet. Uh, so we're gonna, we'll, we'll take that on and, um. And then as, as the policy committee assigns us policies for review. So that's our general, we just wanted to give an update on kind of what we're seeing as our scope of work for the next several months. Did I miss anything, Amanda, Kristen?
Anyone have any questions for the equity committee? And also the equity tool that came out of the equity committee and the policy committee.
Right.
Couple of meetings ago. That's well, thank you. I have, well, a quick follow-up because we're transitioning to a policy. Uh, has the policy committee been using that tool? Have you found it helpful so far? I realize that's a bunch of time.
Yeah, I mean, we're definitely moving at a very slow pace. Right now we've been focusing on this new required policy and we have these.
Cool. Yeah, it was really nice to get the news that our policies weren't all expiring this year.
Yes.
Yeah.
Gonna wrap the case.
All right. Um, so with that, I think we should move on to the special education policy. Does. Amanda, I'm gonna wanna provide just a general overview of.
I could start.
Sure. No, we just kind of talk about that. Well. I could. Okay, so the special education policy is a required policy that is going to be into effect January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. And, um. I've had several meetings or like back and forths with the school board association as to why the policy. Came into effect and why it was needed. And it was basically, what was it?
It essentially boiled down to like Vermont has not been as a state, statewide Vermont has not been in. Compliance with special ed law, you know, sort of just in general. And so this, having the schools have this policy on the books with the school board ensures that it will be. Folded into the policy monitoring schedule. And so we will have to take a look at how we are, um, you know, meeting the, the legal requirements for special ed. Kids in our district on the same pace as all of our other policies.
And it's basically directing, uh, the districts to. Follow a manual that the agency of education is currently drafting. Uh, so this policy right now points to this special education manual that does not exist yet. Um, so the, the last we've heard was that the AOE requested an extension. And they have been granted, but that hasn't come down to us. So like effectively, we're supposed to follow the policy, start. Pass the policy by January fifteenth, but the manual is still not in place though. Um, the VSBA is waiting and they will update us as soon as I would have it. In this policy, at the bottom, I put cross-reference that should be taken off because that's, I, that's not the manual. Um, so we need to remove that. Um, so yeah, we're just waiting for the guidelines so that we can link it. Um, to the policy and that's essentially what it is. It's directing us to follow the manual that the special ed. Department of AOE is crafting, which basically tells us how to follow the rules. And then we are supposed to then monitor that policy to ensure that we are following the special ed.
And the only, this, this language is exactly how the agency, or sorry, the, um, Vermont Schools Boards Association. Drafted their, um. What are they called? Model policies. Model policies. Um, so we didn't change anything except for plugging in our name and then Amanda made the change at the bottom. So we want to, we, you know, the, the equity tool, um, didn't apply to like a lot of this. But the, uh, the main thing that sort of bubbled up using the equity tool was like wanting to make sure that. The language of this policy was as accessible as it possibly could be. To parents and caregivers with students in the special ed system in our district. And that when they go to read this, they're not just confused, which I think it is a little confusing when you first read it. So, so why do we have this? Um, so the only thing that we talked about as a, as a committee was adding a link to the manual so that that was like very easy to access. And go straight from the policy to the manual and then potentially adding a sentence or two at the top. To give context around the reason why we're adopting it as a district is to ensure that it is monitored annually. With the rest of our policies. So we've talked to Pietro about doing that. He's hesitant to add language to required policies. Um. So, but he said we could send him the draft of, of our proposed language and all, what is that? So you may see those two additions at the next meeting.
I think that's.
We don't know what the manual is going to be, but we're gonna follow it. I don't know. It just feels weird.
It's, well, the manual's. The manual's set by statute, so.
No, I understand that, but it's just.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I think what they're hoping is that by the time we get to our third reading. It'll be ready. So we may end up having to hold up, you know, we talked about that in the committee of. Does it make sense to actually pass a policy referring to something that doesn't exist? So I think we're, we're going to cross that bridge when we come to it. If it doesn't exist yet by January fifteenth. We have put, um. We've been trying to, do we put this on tomorrow night's meeting agenda?
It is not more than. There, I don't.
No, it's just the bill contract.
Yeah, the second, the second reading of this is on the January fifth.
Okay, and then the last one's the.
No, the nineteen.
So it's going, so, okay, I think Jim must have, I think Jim must have decided. Gone solo and made a decision not to put it on tomorrow, which, you know, we were trying to sort of like.
No, no, because we said we could add it. Like we can add it after the back to the beginning.
Okay, tomorrow.
I'll ask Jim why he didn't. The plan at the policy committee was to put it on tomorrow night's agenda for a second reading. So that we could potentially be in compliance by, by January fifteenth. So I'll ask Jim why he did that. We also all, we also all felt that it was probably okay for us to not be compliant by four days.
Yeah.
So I can guarantee you that's.
I was gonna say, yeah, let's, yeah, I think it's good to keep it the fifth.
Yeah, and tomorrow we're pretty busy and I don't think we have time to add that language in for a second reading. So. That's what we'll do.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mia?
You, you mostly answered my questions of the, I, I, especially that Pietro's hesitant to add. Language to a required policy, but I would just, you know, agree with you that I think it could use a little bit more context.
Yeah.
The things that stood out to me and I understand. You know, we need to be in compliance with the law, but I also wondered if, especially for that accessibility to parents who have. Or anyone, anyone in our district, just some kind of like, this actually is why we have the manual and the policy in the first place is that we. Expect ours of ourselves that we provide the kind of support that every single student needs regardless of what their needs are. So something that is more, even more than just, we have a policy so that we're in compliance with the law. It's like something that shows that the district is really behind their kids.
Yeah, we talked about exactly that, sort of like the vision and, you know, content and context and intent. And, and not just on this policy, for every policy we're talking about, some of our policies have that.
Yeah.
Um, at the top of the policy.
Yeah.
And then some of our policies don't, right? And so then the question is how sort of, um. Involved with our vision for as a district and related, as it relates to this policy can we get, right? In accordance with Pietro's advice, right? So, but.
And this might be one where he goes, heck no. But the other thing that felt like a gap to me was that it doesn't really name. Accountability in here. I mean, it says we have to follow the, to follow the law, but just between like. The superintendent is responsible for X and the board is responsible for Y. It feels like that could actually be very helpful again. For people in the district who are sort of like. We had a number of families come and people talked to Libby about this, but they, people have also come to the board and say, you must do something about. Literacy or special education and it would be helpful for all of us, I think, to be on the same page about what is it that the board can actually do about special education? And what is it that is the administration's responsibility, you know?
So we had quite a conversation.
Yeah, I think what's hard is that we haven't seen this manual.
Right.
The manual is supposed to have that.
Yeah.
Not necessarily like that, whether the board or the administration, but so.
The data and accountability.
Like what you have to do. So it's like, okay. So we have to wait for it.
Yeah.
We have to wait for that to be able to.
But that was on our radar and it was a big part of our, like exactly what you just said was a big part of our conversation using the equity tool was like. Where are these measures and how do we, how do we address it? And then we're sort of making the, the leap of faith that it most likely will be in this, um. Vermont Special Education Procedures and Practices Manual. And we're hopeful that it will be, but we'll find out.
And if it's not, we can always go back and revise our own policy.
Yeah.
Yes.
Exactly, after the.
Yep.
Or not.
That's what I was just about to add.
For March.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions on that?
No.
I move to adjourn.
A second. All those in favor?
I.
Any naysayers?
Not any, Ken.
Seven fifty-nine.
It's a quickie.